I got you, man.
Key words.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well.
Hey, there's something we got out.
Okay.
Because if it was county and city, they couldn't. It wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking. I concur.
Right.
We're so far away. It's like people starting at different times, so you hear.
I know. It's an uncoordinated course.
If you sit way over there by the public stretch, you're going to be a straight.
Welcome, everybody. This is the Thursday, August fourteenth, City Council, City of Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. I'm Douglasville Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller. I'd like to welcome you all this evening, and we will begin the evening with an invocation from Emily Hardway, our Communications Manager, followed by the pledge allegiance, pledge of allegiance by City Councilman Mr. Christopher Watts. Rise, please.
All right, let's pray. Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful day that you have given us. I ask that you please be with our council this evening, Lord, as they conduct city business. Grant them wisdom and discernment to lead our city well, and please be with us as we all travel from this place this evening and keep us safe. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which is in our hands, one nation, under God, and with no doubt.
Thank you, Councilman Watts, and thank you, Ms. Hardaway, for the invocation. Greatly appreciated. All right. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to read the protocol for this evening's meeting. Tonight, this is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion, and no official action will be taken tonight. Official action will be taken on the following Monday, which would be the seventh, eighteenth, I believe, at six p.m. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item. Comments from citizens and delegates section at the end of tonight's program to discuss your business. So, before we begin, I'd like to go over a few of the ground rules. Please keep, if you do come up and speak, please keep your comments and presentation on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make their decision. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair if you deviate from this requirement. A second deviation will result in the request for you to leave the chambers and the premises for the evening. Only one person shall be talking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to the speaker. Speak from the audience. Cheer. Carry on a conversation with others in the audience or disrupt the order of the meeting in any way. I think you all learned this in second grade, right? We are only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings, which I think we have some tonight. We are not required to accept public comment on other items before the council. We do accept public comment on all items because we feel it enables us to make better decisions. But we will maintain order, and at any time during this meeting, we're prepared to stop the public comment on any given agenda item if we believe that the actions being taken by a member of an audience are out of order. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device, please power it off or put it into silent mode at this time. Greatly appreciate it. Agenda items will be handled as follows. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, and the person presenting the agenda item or the applicant will make his or her presentation at that time, and you will have the opportunity to present all the information that you have relevant to that item. Mayor and members of council may ask questions of the applicant or seek additional information during the presentation. After that, the committee chair will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum time limit of twenty minutes for those who speak in favor or twenty minutes for those who would like to speak in opposition to the agenda item. The applicant's presentation is included within this time allotment at the discretion of the chair. Each speaker will be limited to five, individually to five minutes. Please make sure that you fill out a speaker card, which are over to your right at that desk where the city, our two assistant city managers are. Prior to the podium, approaching the podium, please give that to the city clerk on my right. Make sure that you fill out that entirely with your, when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address for the record, whether you're for or against the item that you're about to discuss. Each person has only one opportunity at the mic, so please do not try, come back up for a second appearance. It's not a question and answer format. It is not a debate format. It is an opportunity to make, for the public to have a comment on a particular respect, a particular agenda item. We understand you may have questions about the information that's being presented. We'll try to answer as best, or the staff will try to answer as best as they can. Let's see. Please address your comments to the chair, not to the members of the audience or the city staff. Please do not present repetitive information that's already been given earlier in the evening. There's no need to come up with the same information more than once. I think that's pretty much about everything. So, all right. So, moving on from that, we will go on to our agenda. We have no announcements or presentations at this time. Our, the first committee is the Economic Development Committee, and that, I'll defer to our vice chair, Councilwoman Nicole Miller, for that committee.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We have no business this evening in economic development.
Thank you, I'm Chair. Our second committee is the Finance Committee, and that is chaired by Councilman Chris Watts.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We have three items tonight. Item A is to hold a public hearing to consider the proposed twenty twenty-five ad valorem tax millage rate for maintenance and operations, and following our assistant city manager and our chief financial officer, Karen Callen's presentation, we'll hold a public hearing, which the ground rules for public hearings have already been laid out, and I'll just remind everybody that this is related to the Douglasville millage rate, not any of the other local entities. But anyway, Ms. Callen?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, as you mentioned in the past before, we've had some comments from citizens who are not in the city limits. So, to know if you're in the city limits, you're likely to have a City of Douglasville sanitation service, so just wanted to clarify that. So, this is a brief presentation on the twenty twenty-five tax year proposed millage rate. Your millage rate on your tax bill is made up, or your tax rate of your, on your tax bill is made up of two components, the MNO rate, maintenance and operations, and the revenue generated from that rate funds maintenance and operations of the city. The bond rate funds our debt, annual debt service payments. Our millage rate history, twenty-four and twenty-five, you'll see that this year we're proposing to keep the millage rate the same, and this is for maintenance and operations. For our bond millage rate, it is decreasing slightly from one point three five to one point two eight seven, and that is because the total digest has increased, so it's less of a millage rate to generate the revenue that we need to pay our debt service payments. When you add those two together, you will see a decrease from ten point oh nine nine to ten point oh three six. This is an example of a tax bill, and you can see on your tax bill, you've got three government entities, the school board, Douglas County, and the City of Douglasville. And I've got the City of Douglasville's highlighted here in case you have any questions. This is a twenty twenty-four example, so as soon as all the three entities adopt their final rate, these will update, and tax bills will go out in about October. Again, the bond rate is going down slightly. The MNO rate, there's no change, so the total decrease is point oh six three. Just some examples of maintenance and operations and how it affects you. If your prior year assessment is three fifty, your current year assessment is three seventy, that's twenty thousand increase. That reflects a sixty-nine ninety-nine annual increase for a monthly, monthly amount of five eighty-three. If your property happens to decrease in value, you will have a decrease of seventy dollars a year roughly and a decrease of five dollars and eighty-three cents, and that's for, again, a twenty thousand dollar assessment decrease. And then if there is no change in your property value, because we're keeping the millage rate the same, there is no change in your annual taxes on the city's component of your property taxes. We have met all the statutory requirements. We have ran the ads as necessary. We posted to our website. We issued a press release, and this is the second of three public hearings. Our final public hearing will be August twenty-eighth. This is required to be published as a property tax increase because we did not roll back the millage rate, the millage equivalent of inflationary increases for the total digest of the city. Again, our final public hearing will be August twenty-eighth at five p.m., and then we will have the final adoption following that meeting at five thirty p.m. At this time, we will open it up for comments to the elected officials, but if you have any specific questions that you need answered, I've got my contact information listed here, and I'll be happy to set up a time to answer any questions that you may have.
Before we begin our public hearing, do, does anyone on the council have any questions or comments? All right. At this time, we will open our, or hold our public hearing. Remember the ground rules, and we invite you to come up to the podium. If you've got a card that you filled out for this portion to speak, please hand it to the ladies over here at the table. And so, anyone that would like to speak on this proposed budget, come forward at this time. Anybody? All right, going once, going twice. All right, at this time, we will close the public hearing, and we will have one more of these, as Ms. Callen pointed out, and we'll move on to our next item. Item B, authorize the mayor to sign an amendment to the professional services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc., to update the Exhibit B fee and payment schedule to the twenty twenty-five rates. Mr. Thompson will handle this.
Good evening. Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, six six nine five Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, three zero one three four. All right, so just to give you guys a brief synopsis, it's basically a housekeeping item. AECom has been our own call engineering consultant for some time now. I want to say the agreement was executed back in twenty fifteen, so basically this item is related to us, basically amending it to adjust their rates based on various market conditions, inflation, stuff of that nature. And we do have AECom here to provide any additional comments or answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Marcus, if I may.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was ten years ago, I think it was, and many of you are still here, which shows your commitment to the city as well. But what I wanted to state here is I consider the City of Douglasville a priority client, not only of mine, but of AECom's, and I've recently been appointed, appointed the client account manager for the City of Douglasville, so you will be a priority, and I appreciate the opportunities of working with you all and making Douglasville the great city that it is and will continue to be. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mayor Pro Tem and any of the council, do you have any questions or comments on this item? Mayor Pro Tem, you look like you're nodding your head there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just looking over their, their rate structure, and it is, it is pretty much in line with professional services that I'm familiar with and around the country and certainly around the region, so there's, I don't take any issue with what they're aligning. To go ten years without adjusting is.
I did my very best. I, you know, eventually called up with.
I don't know if I.
I got all of it, and they're like.
If I was your manager, I would be like, why aren't you going back to Douglasville? Look at those numbers.
Yeah. I got a little spanking on my hand, but nonetheless, they, as well as myself, see you all as a priority client, and again, we're grateful to work with you all, partner with you all.
Appreciate it.
It's my understanding that over this, these ten years, y'all, within the contract, you've had the ability to make adjustments, but you just haven't. Is that the way I understand?
That's correct.
And going forward, that's the way the contract will continue to be?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council? All right, well, thank you very much. I'd like, if it's okay with council, to place this item on the consent agenda for Monday. Okay. All right, thank you very much, and I'll move on to the next item.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Appreciate it. Item C, authorize the mayor to sign a proposal with Club Car LLC for annual golf cart rental and GPS tracking services in the yearly amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-two cents to be paid from general fund, Department sixty-one sixty-five, and authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement to be provided upon proposal approval pending legal review. And Mr. Cartwright will handle this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Cartwright, ninety ninety Rose Avenue. So, going to hit the highlights of this one for you guys. Every four or five years, depending on the lease length, we have to redo a golf cart lease. Our golf carts are obviously the lifeblood of the golf course. Without them, we're in big trouble out there. So, one of the big changes this year is we have used state contracted pricing for this proposal. We have gotten bids from the other two major manufacturers, all of which are located in Georgia before. Club car has always been the cheapest one that we have gotten. They have some incentives in place to keep existing customers, existing customers. So, we did go with the Omnia government contracting price this year. The current total cost is ninety-six thousand. Sometimes it's hard to get those parts in in time, so we're having to shut the range down, pick it by hand. We are going to have two of those carts now, and we plan on rotating, if they're both working, one for each month, and then giving it a month off, and always having one standing by if something does go wrong. And then, again, highlighting that we're switching out those gas-powered gators for the lithium battery-powered carts for our maintenance staff to use, obviously better for the environment, but also better for the golfers because they're totally quiet instead of the loud ones driving around.
And I did ask you about the value of, that the GPS provides, keeping the golf carts where y'all want them and where you don't.
Yes, sir. So, these will have the same GPS system as the current fleet has, a slight upgrade with a new screen, so they do offer the option of taking the screens off of the carts and then putting them on the new ones. We did that four years ago. These screens being eight years old, we felt it was time to go ahead and replace all of those as well.
Okay. All right. If there are no other comments or questions, I'm going to ask for this to be placed on the consent agenda also for Monday. Is that all right? Thank you, Mr. Cartwright.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mayor Pro Tem, that's all we had tonight under finance.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Our next committee is Housing and Community Affairs. We will go to our ranking member on that, Councilwoman Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We have no business under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Our next committee is Legislative Intergovernmental. Ranking member there is Councilman Watts.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We have no items tonight under legislative and intergovernmental.
I'll stick with you on the Personnel and Organization Committee. Councilman Watts?
We have no item under Personnel and Organization either.
All right. And our next committee is Planning and Development, and that is Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, so, yep, we do have a couple of items this evening. Let me go ahead and read off this statement before we get started. It says, Planning and Development Committee. Good evening. I'd like to call the Planning and Development Committee to order. This evening, some of the items on our agenda will require a public hearing. Before we begin those items, I'd like to briefly review the procedures we will follow to ensure an orderly and fair process. These hearings are conducted in accordance with Georgia's Zoning Procedures Act. As elected officials, it is our responsibility to ensure that all applications are reviewed fairly and impartially and in accordance with the city's zoning ordinances and adopted land use policies. For each zoning item requiring a public hearing, we will begin with a presentation from the city staff outlining the requests and any relevant findings. The applicant will then have an opportunity to speak. Following those presentations, the mayor and council may ask questions of both staff and the applicant. After that, we will open the floor for public comment. If you would like to speak in support or in opposition to the application, please complete a comment card before approaching the podium. Comment cards are located near the entrance of the room and should be submitted to the city clerk before your turn to speak. Please include your name, address, and item. I'm so sorry. Let me catch my breath here. That's. And the item you wish to address, if possible, and any specific questions you would like staff to follow up on. All comments should be made respectfully and directed to the chair. When you speak, please begin by stating your name and your address for the record. If you ask questions, please understand that we will not respond immediately during the public comment portion. Instead, staff will attempt to address all questions at once before the close of the public comment, provided the information is readily available. Each speaker will be allowed up to five minutes to speak. We will allocate a total of twenty minutes for comments and support and twenty minutes for those in opposition. This is not a debate. Interruptions, outbursts, or other disruptions will not be permitted. There's a general public comment period at the end of the meeting tonight, but city council cannot hear additional council cannot hear additional public comment during the general public comment portion for specific zoning items, where public hearing has already taken place for that zoning item. The mayor will cut off any public comment that refers back to a specific zoning item. As a reminder, the mayor has requested that there be no applause or other demonstrations during the meeting. Please ensure that all electronic devices are silenced, and anyone who disrupts the proceedings will be asked to leave. With that, we will now proceed to the first zoning application on tonight's agenda." Sorry, that was a mouthful. Our first item is item number twenty-five dash three-two-two. Says, "Consider request for final repla approval to establish the as-built locations of the townhome buildings for lots sixty-five through seventy-one of Laurelwood Phase Two for twelve point zero-one-eight acres at five-zero-five-nine Reservoir Drive and Landlots Twenty-three and Twenty-four, District One, Section Five, application by F.R. Arborplace LLC." And Mr. James Gordon is going to go over this item with us.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. James Gordon, 6695 Church Street. This item is similar to one you've seen before. It is the Laurelwood Townhomes near Arborplace Mall. This set of townhomes, this is just one building that we're dealing with this evening. It's in the back corner of the property. And this is what the building looks like. And this is also the rear. Please note that this is the final building in this line, and as you can see from where we are now, the, um, this time of year, the foliage has come out and it's starting to hide some of the, the buildings now. This is from another angle. And just to go over a little housekeeping, this is a hundred-and-eighty-two unit development, and presently, we have five buildings remaining for a total of twenty-six units. There's one building remaining right near the model, and there's four buildings remaining near the swimming pool. None of those four buildings have broken ground to date. And I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Perfect, thank you so much, Mr. Gordon. Mayor Protem, council, do you guys have any questions or comments of Mr. Gordon regarding this item? I know we've seen a lot of these. Everything's been going really smoothly. Well, um, are you guys okay with putting this on the consent agenda then? Beautiful, thank you so much. Mr. Gordon, thank you very much.
Yes.
And our next item is item twenty-five dash three-two-three. Says, "Consider request for plat approval to split the two-point-two-one acre parcel into a zero-point-three-one acre tract and a one-point-nine-zero acre tract located on eight-four-seven-nine Chicago Avenue and Landlot Sixteen and One-Ninety-three in District One and Two, Section Five, parcel ID C-zero-two-five, application by John P. Jones and Land Development Technologies." And Mr. Gordon is going to go over this item with us.
Eighty-four-seventy-nine Chicago Avenue is located just a couple houses off of West Strickland. It's a approximately two-acre site. And back in two thousand and seven, there was a lot of demolition that happened on the site. It was very overgrown, some of the outbuildings were taken down, and this is what it looks like today. There was a new deed of record in two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, they did some remodeling on the main building, the, uh, gray building, and then now they're looking to split the lot. And it is on R four.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Mayor Protem, council, do you guys have questions of Mr. Gordon? You do, Coach?
Yeah. One of the things I saw, and it was, uh, from legal, uh, had to do with making sure that when it's divided, that there won't be any future issues as far as development on it. So I'm assuming that all of that was taken care of.
Correct. The new area showing the setback, well, they added the setback, it's not shown on this drawing, but the front setback does go across the front porch. Um, but that was a existing condition. So everything, the, um, everything fits except for that one little portion, and all that is existing.
Okay.
Right.
Alright, thank you.
No, absolutely. So essentially, we have someone who's went in, cleaned up the property, renovated a home, and now they want to subdivide. Do you have any questions? No? Was the applicant here, and did they want to add anything to that?
Uh, no, they're not here today.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Council, are you, are you guys all okay with this item? Can we place this on the consent agenda? Okay, I appreciate that. Mr. Gordon, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have item twenty-five dash two-one-seven. Says, "Tabled from July twenty-first. To hold a public hearing and consider request for change in zoning from RA Residential Agricultural County to R two Single Family Residential Detached District City to PUD Plan Unit Development District City for twenty-one point-two-four acres located on Malone Road and Landlot Six Forty-Six, District Eighteen, Section Two, parcel IDs zero-zero-zero-one, zero-zero-zero-two, zero-zero-zero-three, and Landlot Six Forty-Seven, District Eighteen, Section Two, parcel ID zero-zero-zero-one, zero-zero-zero-two, and Landlot Seven Zero Three, District One, Section Three, parcel IDs zero-zero-zero-six, application by the Malfris Group, care of Mason Malfris. And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. Dana Gray, six-six-nine-five Church Street. Uh, this is a request to rezone four parcels, zoned RA, uh, Residential Agriculture, uh, which is in the county, and two parcels, zoned R two Single Family Residential Detached, which is in the city, to PUD Plan Unit Development located on Malone Road. So on July seventeenth and twenty-first, the applicant proposed a hundred-and-sixty-nine units, uh, consisting of a hundred-and-fifty-four townhomes and fifteen triplexes. The applicant has provided a revised site plan. They are now proposing a hundred-and-three units, consisting of fifty-one, um, units that are twenty-four-foot-wide townhomes and fifty-two units that are forty-five-wide single-family detached homes. Uh, this is a reduction of sixty-six units. So with this reduction, an emergency access is no longer required because they are under the hundred-and-twenty-unit threshold. All units that they are proposing will have two-car garages, and staff is recommending, uh, a condition that the landscape plan for the twenty-five-foot buffer, which they chose to maintain within this plan, uh, will be reviewed by the city engineer and the, and approved by the community development director. Um, we are also proposing a condition that the front yard setbacks, um, be set back roughly twenty foot, but myself and the engineer are gonna go over the exact numbers, and we would have that for you on Monday. So the goal is, when you're parking on that parking pad, that, that, that car or that SUV will not block the sidewalk. And the applicant is present.
Wonderful, thank you so much. If you want to come on down, give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Darrell Ray, six-five-five-four Church Street, three-oh-one-three-four. So Dana stole a lot of my thunder there with everything that he talked about we've done on here, but you can see, um, that, you know, we have taken time to listen to the council, listen to the community of, uh, what, you know, possibly could happen here, and, uh, I believe that this revised site plan does a much better job of, uh, maybe, um, hitting those goals that we've been hearing from, from so many different people here. So, as we said, um, as Dana said, the, uh, seventy-eight unit reduction from, he actually said sixty-six, so that was from the last one, but from our initial, original submetal, this is a seventy-eight unit, um, decrease. Um, so in, kinda looking at that as well, density-wise, you know, we were asking for just over eight, and this is, uh, gets down to, um, uh, under five, at like four-point-eight-five, I believe, is the, the unit, uh, units per acre that we're asking for. Um, also, the, hey, you know, s, uh, let's put some single-family in there. So now we're, you know, majority single-family at, I think, fifty-two, um, single-family homes and fifty-one, uh, townhome units there, um, on that. I think we've, um, you know, addressed the comment about the, uh, um, two-car garages that were wanted on the townhomes, so, um, that, that's, uh, gonna work, which by doing that, basically went back to a twenty-four-foot-wide townhome minimum lot size, uh, on that, so, um, you know, Dana also mentioned that, uh, you know, there had been, you know, some questions about the, uh, um, emergency, uh, uh, access, uh, to the neighborhood, to the existing neighborhood back there, so by being under the one-twenty, uh, we're at one-oh-three, um, that makes that requirement not, uh, required, alright? We did maintain the twenty-five-foot buffer, that was something that was, um, you know, talked about to begin with. We've added that, we're planning on, uh, keeping that, uh, in there as well. The other thing too, to, you know, um, this, this has, uh, maybe a little more connectivity through it with the roadways, um, in here and the circling, uh, that we have in there, and I guess minimized, uh, our, um, our cul-de-sacs a, as, as we could. Um, I think that this definitely aligns with the city's comprehensive plans. Let's see here if there's anything else I want to say before we... Uh, I would say that this, this plan also increases the, um, the, uh, open space that we had planned from, uh, three-point-seven-five to now we're at, uh, four-point-two-one on that. So, I guess, uh, I believe at that point, I'll turn it back over to you guys, unless you have any questions or how you want to move forward.
Thank you. Yep, thank you so much, Ms. Ray. Uh, yes, I do have a couple of questions. Of course, um, I was, I, I like to see that big reduction in numbers. I, I know definitely you guys listened as far as the, um, connectivity, got rid of some of Mayor Protem's cul-de-sacs, um, you know, the, the two-car garages and all. Um, but I wanted to clarify a couple things. One, um, square footage, what type of square footage are we looking at on these?
So, um, um, I'm gonna say duh.
Okay.
Um, I don't know that I have that. What I do know is that my building, um, my building foot, or excuse me, my lots, the single-family lots are forty-six feet wide and a hundred-and-twenty feet deep. That would be a minimum lot size there. Okay, and then when we start adjusting this, um, building setback to make sure that we're off of the sidewalks and everything, you know, that could change what those are. I know my client probably has, uh, already some builders and people that know all of this information, um, but at this point, I don't have that exact number for you.
Okay, do you know if we could get just maybe not a hard number, but some kind of range of what, just what types of, uh, square footage-type plans that we're looking at before Monday?
Yes.
Okay. And then, what kind of price points are you guys looking to be in?
So, um, per my discussions with the, um, with the Malfris's, you know, they're looking at the townhomes being in a range of the, uh, high two-hundreds to the low three-hundreds, and the single-family homes, um, being in the high three-hundreds.
Okay, and then, I know we talked about before with the HOAs. Are you guys still looking at doing an HOA, and will there be a rental cap?
So definitely, there'll be an HOA, because we've got a lot of common space and amenities and stormwater ponds and those kind of things that'll have to be taken care of. On the, on the rental cap, you know, um, I don't really have a number on that. We hadn't really discussed that, um, between myself and the client. You know, I guess if that's, you know, open for discussion, we're, we're here to listen. You know, probably haven't really, um, put that in our, um, you know, in our scope, if you will, of, of what that would look like.
I definitely think that it could be beneficial. And then, on that note also, what types of amenities are they looking at? Do we know that yet?
So, we haven't taken it that far to the a, exact amenities, but what I'd say is that it'd be, it'd be real easy to tie this to the existing code of Douglasville, of what requirements would be, you know, maybe something already written in the code that says, if you've got this, then you have to do this as a minimum, right? That might say, you gotta have so many playcourts, or you've gotta have a clubhouse and a pool that's a minimum size, that I, I know the code probably has something we could easily pick out of that to say that fits for this development.
I don't know, 'cause I, I think most of our developments, they vary, you know, like if you have a development coming in for seniors, they're not gonna want what a development geared more towards families is going to want. So I don't know that that would be something that would be too beneficial for us. Um, and then, in the buffers, yes, that's, was my next question. Would there be any way, and I know that you've got a lot of density in the center, but in the outer scape, where the trees are, would there be a possibility to leave some of that buffer undisturbed?
I wouldn't want to commit to doing it all, or, you know, any kind of percentage, because, you know, there is some rough terrain through here, so my grading plans and all of those things are gonna determine where you have to grade to, to get the lots flat for the buildings and all of those kind of things.
Okay.
You know, the commitment would be to meet the city's landscape buffer standards.
Okay.
And if there's something that we can save, it's gonna save us money also to not take trees down if we don't have to put more back, right? So where you can, yes, but I just don't know that, that, you know, that I could say it's, uh, there's no way I can do this development and say it's gonna be undisturbed.
Okay. And then, would there be a possibility, have you guys looked at adding a fence into that buffer, especially where it backs up to the neighboring communities?
Um, yeah, I don't know that a fence is, uh, is something that would stop this project.
Okay.
Did I say that backwards?
No, no, you're good.
Or kinda?
You're good, I just had a lot of questions, I feel like.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think a fence, privacy fence would stop anything from moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, council, do you guys have questions of the developer?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I also don't have this time.
No? Okay. Alright, well, with that being said then, let's open up that public hearing. Again, we will allow, um, twenty minutes for discussion. First, let's go ahead and open up to those who want to speak in favor of this application. You will have five minutes to speak. If you'll grab that comment card, and you can give it to Ms. Callen and Ms. Jackson over here on your right. If we don't have anyone wanting to speak in favor of this, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and move on to the next portion if you want to speak against this item respectfully and kindly, please. We will have twenty minutes also, uh, five minutes per person. Please give your name and address for the record once you get to the podium. Don't everybody come at once.
Are we, are we opposed, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Counsel, Dr. T. Sparks, thank you for your service. We are opposed. We are opposed to this project. One, they're taking our, our deer run and our green space. Can we put this picture back up here? Do I do that? Can you do that? There you go. If you'll look around the surrounding areas of it, this still doesn't match our, our four neighborhoods that surround it, our single-family dwellings, doesn't match nothing there. We have Wellington, Hunter's Ridge, and two others. And each one of them solidly surrounded. And we, we don't want this project. We don't want the runoff of all the water coming down. We already on a floodplain. And as I have spoken in the past about the traffic, I, I don't want to be redundant about the things that you know that I've already said, other than I can't stress to you, we grossly do not want this project. They want to do single-family dwelling homes and as they are a surrounded area, you know, that's a possibility right there. But what we have here does not match anything. How they said this is a single-family dwelling home, opinions vary. I don't see it. So with the impact that it has on every service that we have in our area, and as you noticed, did nobody stand up for this but the developer. We do not want this on the north side at this time. And this is, this is going to cost a lot of us, if this takes place, to leave Douglas County. Not that it matters to anybody. But we're business owners, we're longtime residents, we have great work in the community, in the city of Douglasville. And I thank you for not raising the millage rate anymore than it has been. I'll just throw that out there because, you know, I, I, we house a lot of folks that are on fixed incomes and they, they live off of nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars a month. And that's a real tight budget for them. So everything, every penny is, is, we're looking at it. It matters and it matters big time to the less fortunate. Just like that matters to them, this matters to us. We don't want the traffic. We don't want it. I don't want to be redundant. I've said time and time again, all with different things pertaining to utilities and what else is going on. But madams, sirs, we do not want this. Have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Hey there, Mr. Harris. If you'll please just give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Kelvin Harris, address 6637 Copper Court, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. Council member, how y'all doing? I'm kind of a little disturbed. First of all, these numbers keep changing. As y'all know, I gave some numbers once before. Now we come back with another set of numbers, one-oh-three, fifty-three. The builders don't know the square footage. That's a problem with me. You're not coming here with your I's dotted and your T's crossed. Once again, we don't want to be bamboozled on the north side of the track. We've been bamboozled one time by a set of apartments. And I'm holding y'all accountable. If you go back and look at the minutes and read the minutes, when we start coming forward, it'll answer a lot of y'all's questions. This is not right. I'm opposed to it. One of the main problems I got with the building, I researched his website. Excuse me. His son's been here and that website disturbs me. I can't get no information about it, but I Googled it. Some people speak highly of him, some people speak badly of him. But the bottom line is, this is not welcome here. The mayor asked him a question about the community. Did he reach out to the community? Well, he said he did. I'm one of the persons living in that community. Never seen, never seen no paperwork, nothing. It seems like these builders can come here-
Mr. Harris, I'm sorry, you're... Oh, okay, sorry, wrong timer. Keep going.
It seems like these builders can come in and change of instance and do what they want to do. And we take the slack for it. It's time for it to stop. Because y'all work for us. And if y'all can't work for us, we're going to get y'all out of their seat. Because it's serious business now, where we're talking about a community that have spoken out and y'all don't listen. Y'all want to do what y'all want to do anyway, to get this stuff passed. It'd be voted down one time, it'd be voted down twice. And some kind of way, it always slides back up to be re-voted again. I just want y'all to think, if you lived in this community, what would you do? And take in consideration that the citizens have spoken and spoken loud. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Excuse me?
I said, thank you, Mr. Harris. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak?
Cindy Welch, 3002 Concord Way. I only have a question. It looks to be like there will be a hundred-and-three homes and there appears to only be one way in and one way out. Now you know that each one of those homes will have at least two cars. So there's two-hundred cars trying to get in and out of there on one street. And it's, I don't know if there's another way for them to put another entrance in, but maybe they need to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Rouse, 6404 Cardiff Lane, 30134. Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council. With the changes, kind of changes everything that I was going to talk about, but I'm still totally against this project. I'm tired. I'm weary. This has really worn me out, but I'm still in it for the fight. And I know a lot of my neighbors feel the same way and we're not going anywhere. We're going to fight this to the end. I want to start out by saying that we elected you to serve and to act on our best interests. This does not serve us. This is not in our best interest at all. When it comes time to vote on this issue of them putting now, they say, single-family homes, I don't really understand maps, but it doesn't look like there's very, very much room between the homes. It's actually, from looking at it, I could be looking at it wrong. It looks like they are literally attached to each other. Or if there's a breezeway between the, between each home, it looks exactly like that, a breezeway. If this is put in, it is going to affect the livelihood of the residents and of the neighborhood surrounding. Mind you, they want to put all this on a two-way narrow-lane street. Please forgive me, I'm trying to find my place since things have changed. I've attended every meeting that they have proposed or that has come up since last year. One thing sticks out to me more than anything. And what sticks out more to me than anything was reaching out to the community, having community meetings, meeting with the HOA. I believe it was on May twenty-ninth, you asked them, had they met with the community? Their response was yes. You asked them, had they, was it well-attended? They said yes. To my knowledge, that did not happen. To me, that's an integrity issue. Also, if I'm not mistaken, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they reached out to one residence the day before that twenty-ninth meeting. And maybe one or two people were there, no one else. And each time I've come up here, that was one of my main concerns, meet with us, talk with us. We want growth, but we want good growth. We want growth that expands us. That's what we need. We don't need something shoved down our throats just because they want to put some money in their pockets. As the gentleman before me said, when you try to Google them or try to find them, you can't find Malfris Group. I've not been able to find it. But let me point out some of the things that, since everything kind of changed a little bit, he couldn't answer about square footage. He couldn't answer about rental cap. Like I said before, what's the distance between the homes? Also, do you have a picture of the cosmetic front of the homes? Can we see them? Other than, than what they have here? Basically, I, I, I'm tired. Please do not vote this in. I need to save my strength for the next fight. And I think the next fight is the taxes or trying to raise the property taxes or something that I just heard about recently that I got to go to a meeting on Monday at ten o'clock in the morning when everybody's at work. Unfortunately, I'm not working Monday, but I'll be there. So I just want to save my strength for the next one. Ask you guys, please, 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 please do not vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rouse.
You have eight minutes remaining.
Okay, thank you. Did you guys hear that? Eight minutes remaining?
Good evening. My name is Alisa Jenkins, 7287 Essex Drive. And I'm a Hunter's Ridge resident. And I oppose this. I think it's too many houses, it's too small an area. We already have enough houses in that area. I initially went to the zoning, the planning initially and it was just me and Gail Rouse were there. And they had opposed this initially, yes, there were more homes, but it's just too dense an area. And even the changes they've made, it's just, like Gail was saying, there is no distance between the homes. It's just, they're all... And I do have a question about the schools. Do the schools ever reply about the additional homes and children that would be going to the schools?
They had responded to the original application that they were okay with. And so I can't imagine why they would be upset about the reduction, but we'll have a more specific answer for you. We've already asked for that on Monday.
Right, okay, all right. And I did have a question, if they knew that the issue for quite a while had been with the using a cul-de-sac in Hunter's Ridge and the reduction of homes, they never reduced it until now. I mean, they knew ahead of time, if you just reduce the homes, that was a major kind of issue for our community, along with the, a lot of houses that were there. So I do kind of question, you know, this going back and forth, not knowing the information that is pertinent to us. And as far as meeting with the community, I've been at most of these meetings as well. I've never had offered to be, anyone to meet with me or come together prior to the meeting, when we just find out new information. I've never been invited to that at all. So I oppose this. I just don't think it's good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Six minutes.
Okay.
So probably one more speaker.
Okay. Folks, we have six minutes remaining. If there was anyone else who wanted to speak in opposition of this item. Going once, going twice. Okay, let's go ahead and close this public hearing. I did want to clarify just a few things. Ms. Rouse, the county's millage rate hearing is on Tuesday, August nineteenth. They have one at ten AM and six PM, so don't go on Monday, go on Tuesday, the nineteenth. And just to clarify a few other things, Mr. Ray here works for an architecture firm, not the Malfris Group. I know that there's a lot of emotions-
Civil engineering.
Engineering group. Excuse me. But I know that there's a, a lot of feelings going on. Just wanted to make sure that we knew who we were speaking with. So he's not the one who chooses the houses that go on the sites. He's the one that chooses the layout of the streets and the, and the sites. And actually, Ms. Welsh, we had looked at doing a second entrance and exit, but the folks did not like it, Ms. Welsh. So that's why that got removed as well. I think that was all the questions that we had from that one. But if we think of more, it's okay, because there's still more to come. All right, friends. Item twenty-five dash two-three-five, tabled from July twenty-first. To hold a public hearing can consider a petition to annex thirteen-point-six-nine acres at the northeast intersection of Malone Road and Lioncrest Drive and Land Lot six-forty-six, District eighteen, Section two, parcel IDs zero-zero-zero-one, zero-zero-zero-two, zero-zero-zero-three, and Land Lot seven-zero-three, District one, Section three, parcel ID zero-zero-zero-six, application by the Malfris Group. And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Good evening again. There are four parcels at the back of the property which are zoned, are a residential agriculture, which are in the county. And those four parcels, the applicant would like to annex into the city.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Okay. Mr. Ray, did you have anything to add to this?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Daryl Ray, sixty-five fifty-four Church Street, Douglasville, three-oh-one, three-four. All right, so I was able to communicate with the developer here. So on town homes, single fam, uh, town home square footage is fifteen-hundred to two-thousand square feet. And the, uh, single-family homes detached are sixteen-hundred to twenty-two-hundred.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, and then, you know, just to touch on the, the Malfris Group and the Malfris people, these folks, they're a fourth-generation company. The, the fellow that y'all did meet, Mason that was here, his, let me just make sure I say it correctly, great-grandfather started this company. And, you know, they've done a lot of really good work around, all throughout the southeast. Now, I'm not a history buff on the Malfris Group and, and the family there, but just getting to know them personally, you know, they're good, they're good people and they've done a lot of good, good projects and stuff. So I would, I would ask you to discount any shade cast towards the Malfris's.
No doubt, thank you.
So, all right, so, you know, you've got everything else. We've talked about the annexation, that's what this is. And hopefully, we can make this annexation move forward. But I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, council, do you guys have questions? Mr. Ray?
I don't have a question. I didn't want to say something. And, and I do understand the position you're in, Mr. Ray. And I, this is not meant any disrespect to your company, because I've worked with HRC. You guys are great, great engineers. You do fantastic work. So you, you've got to work with what you have. And you work with the land you're given and you work with the, with the developer you have, you know, the client you have. It, it is unfortunate that, I think in this particular case, that we couldn't put alleyways and ways of getting those garages off of the front streets and, and making the buildings a little more attractive. It's, it's also unfortunate that your, that your client didn't come today because I would like you to take this message back to him. I'm putting on my architect's hat for a second. Speaking about, from the perspective of somebody who's very passionate about design and building. And I really, really dislike immensely when somebody uses the term "product" for a building. Because that tells me something about them. Buildings are not products. Toothpaste is a product. A bicycle is a product. Buildings are meant to be monuments. They're meant to survive generations. If you look at it as a product, then you're looking at it as something transactional. And to, to, to a lot of the, the concerns that members of the community have, I can, I totally understand. When you're talking about, you know, a developer comes in from wherever, it doesn't matter. We're all, we can only be from one place and then we do our work where we go. But when they're not paying attention to the community, when they're not actually going out and talking to people, I think there's a disconnect that happens. And you don't understand what that community really wants and what they need and what they understand and how they live their lives. And that's all what goes in. You as a designer know that. And when we design buildings, we don't design products. We design something that's for a community that's meant to last generations. It's meant to last spans of families. And something that will be, we can all be proud of, that's part of the community in the long run. I don't really care what's on the inside. I don't care how many bedrooms they have. I don't care if they've got granite countertops, you know, that can come and go. I don't care if they've got granite countertops, you know, that can come and go. But I care what's on the outside, because that's what we all share. And so that's the message I would take back to the developers, that, you know, they need to be lit... They, we, our job is to listen to the community. And it's kind of nice when, when somebody who develops in the community listens to them as well. That's all I have to say for now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I do care about the things that are on the inside as well. As a third-generation realtor, I care very much about the things that are going to go and the love that is poured inside the home as well. Counsel, any other questions of Mr. Ray? Okay. Not at this time, then. At this time, let's open up that portion of the public hearing. First, we will allow about 20 minutes, five minutes per person to speak in favor of this item. And if we have no takers, as Sam Davis would say, we will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and move along. If we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this item. Five minutes, thank you so much.
Dr. John Rogers, 6330 Holborn Lane, Douglasville, Georgia, 301, 34. Talking about generational, well, we've been on, owned a lot of Huey Road for the past 35 years. And I'm about fifth generation. My wife is a pounds, and I don't know how many generations they go back, but it's a lot. They're back in horse and buggies. And we don't want it. I don't know why they don't have no pictures for what the develop and the cosmetics of this thing would look on the outside, because last time they were here, it was ugly. And so if we was gonna put something out there, the part that I don't want is the agricultural part. I don't want to lose any types of, any agricultural that we have on the north side, period. Any agricultural. Like I said, it's green space. And it may come up when, as times go forward, we might need to farm that land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Actually, we do have images. Staff, is there any way that we can get some of those images up on the screen so folks can see those? Can anyone help me do that, please? If not, then we can look at that after council, because they are online too, so we'll make sure that you have those. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak in opposition of this item? Okay, and if there's no one else, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing. Now that we've heard, is there any, are there any other questions, comments, thoughts, considerations? Okay. I know that that's, it, it's a lot to weigh out. Just for, for some clarity, though, the area, our future land use map and the county's future land use map is for medium density. Not only through this area, but actually going on over into Hunter's Ridge and all of the planned unit development now. So although it may not look like this planned unit development, because of the density, it is considered a planned unit development. So the density overall is very similar and is in line with what the future land use map says. So keep in mind, if it's not this, friends, it very well could end up being something else. If it's not this time, it could be on down the road in five years or 10 years. So if there's a chance to work things out and ask for certain conditions and considerations, they've already shown a lot of consideration in, in backing off of those numbers a lot. I know myself, before Monday, I would like to see the, to make sure that we have that approval from the school board. Let's see if we could maybe work on doing a fence. I know Mr. Gray added a few things that we wanted to see about looking to do. I don't know if we had other questions, but if, if we think of others, if it's okay, I'll just pass them along to Mr. Gray, and we'll make sure that, that you get those. And if there's nothing else to add to it, we will take this item up on Monday. Thank you. The next item is item 25-326. Says authorize staff to refer to the planning commission. A city initiated rezoning from light industrial district to general commercial district at 12811 Veterans Memorial Highway and Land Lot 191, District 2, Section 5, parcel ID 0046. Application by community development. And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Good evening. Again, this is a request to refer this item to planning commission. This particular parcel is zoned LI. They do have some existing general commercial uses, but we would like to rezone it to GC so that they can provide service to, to business owners under GC, because LI does not accommodate that. So this is basically a cleanup of that parcel for them to help them gain more renters. Right now, they have auto broker office, commercial art studio, and residential and commercial construction offices. So with this rezoning, they will be allowed to have more commercial uses and won't be hindered in any way.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mayor Protem, council, do you have questions?
Not as much question. I was gonna refer to a city manager and our, and our counselor, because it's not typical that city, the city initiates a zoning change on a, on a private property, and it's not, it's not normal practice. So I think, but I think it needs to be explained to the public why we're doing it in this particular case. And I think we're couple, and we have another property or two there also.
There's actually three on here. This one, this one is in a commercial district. It is somewhat used in a commercial zoning capacity, but they are limited on, on who they can rent it out to right now because of that light industrial zoning.
And the majority of the building is, is designed for, for small offices. So in the past, they had a lawyer, a lawyer's office, they had a restaurant, another construction company. So it's basically, that's what the building can accommodate.
I'm, I'm not questioning it. I just want to make sure the folks understand why it's happening, you know, from the perspective of the city and legal. Because I guess it's, it's not a normal procedure. It's, this is more of a cleanup kind of a thing rather than, than initiation.
Your staff attorney will address the non-conforming users.
So oftentimes, you'll see when the zoning map was updated, that the zoning that was assigned to a specific parcel was not necessarily the zoning that should apply based on the use of that property. So what Mr. Gray has kind of explained, and, and just to address this to the, to the public, is that we want to make sure the use of the property actually matches the zoning. So this is a housekeeping item request to just be able to clean up the zoning map to make it where the use actually meets that. And some of the other items, it'll be even more clear for items F and G that are coming up under planning and development for the same purpose.
Anything to make people better experts at zoning policy. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. Okay, so again, we're just asking that we send this to the planning commission so it can come back to us. Okay. So if there are no more questions, are you guys okay with placing this on the consent agenda? Yes? Okay, thank you so much. Next item. Item number 25-327. To authorize staff to refer to planning commission. A city initiated rezoning from R2 Single Family Residential Detached District to Neighborhood Commercial District at 6519 Spring Street and Land Lot 20, District 1, Section 5. Parcel ID 0012. Application by community development. And Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Again, we are requesting to refer this to the planning commission. This particular property is zoned R2, which is single-family detached residential. They have, in the past, had commercial uses. There was a trophy business there, and I do believe a lawyer's office. So again, this is housekeeping, so that it would be zoned to neighborhood commercials so that they can accommodate those type of uses for commercial.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mayor Protem, any more questions? Okay. All right, are you guys okay with placing this on the consent agenda? Very good, thank you. Last one, friends. Item number 25-328. Says authorize the staff to refer to the planning commission. A city initiated rezoning from R3 Single Family Residential Detached District to GC General Commercial District on Fairburn Road and Land Lot 52, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID 0032. Application by community development. Mr. Gray.
Yes, and we are requesting to refer this to the planning commission as well. This is located on Fairburn Road in between the Dunkin' Donuts and the Pizza Hut. It is presently zoned R3. It is about 30 foot wide and I think by 70, 70 foot or so. Of course, a single family cannot go in there. It is a road to access the back of the property, the proposed hotel to go there. They were going to propose using a backway with this rezoning to GC, which will match that back property where the proposed hotel is. This will make it one piece, and they can access the hotel from that, from Fairburn Road.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mayor Protem, council? No? Okay. Are you guys okay with placing this one on the consent agenda? Very good. Thank you so much. Mr. Gray, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, that is all we have this evening for planning and development.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. You did a marvelous job tonight. Moving along, we have the, the next committee is the Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. Back to you, Councilwoman Miller.
No business. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Next committee is Public Relations Committee. Mr. Sam Davis. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Our next committee is the Public Safety Committee, and that tonight is handled by the Vice Chair, Mr. Chris Watts.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We have three items tonight under public safety. Item A, consider a request for the alcoholic beverage licenses for retail packaged sale of wine and malt beverages at the following establishment. Proposal, proposed licensee MHH Hotel LLC, DBA Marriott Spring Hill Suites located at 960 Bob Arnold Boulevard, Lithia Springs, Georgia 30122. Proposed agent outlet manager Mi Hyun Han. The required fees have been paid to the finance department. And is the applicant here? Come forward, please, and give us your name and address for the record. And I'm sure I did not pronounce that name correctly, so you're gonna help me out here.
It's okay, it's Mi Han.
Mi Han.
First name Mi, last name Han. Address is 960 Bob Arnold Boulevard, Lithia Springs, Georgia 30122.
So this is a new license? Yes, okay. Counsel, anybody have any questions?
No.
It's, it's, it's an existing hotel.
Correct.
Correct. And requesting your first alcoholic beverage license. And I guess one of the questions we usually ask is what type of training do you put, will you put your staff through in order to abide by?
They'll do their regular serve safe alcohol-like training and like the tips and et cetera. And we'll always verify identification for the customers that purchase alcohol and just the regular training.
Will patrons of the hotel just come down to the front desk to purchase what they want? Are y'all having some type of bar setup or?
So it's gonna be in a locked refrigerator, so the customer selects what they want, and the front desk will open the locked container and provide it to them. It's clo, it's packaged beer and wine only.
I got you, okay. All right, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay. All right, well, come back on, and we'll vote on this on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item B, authorize the mayor to sign an equitable sharing agreement as certification with the United States Department of Justice for sharing of forfeited assets. And Dr. Gary Sparks will handle this one.
Yes, Counsel, this is an annual certification report that we have to send in to Department of Justice to verify how we are spending the asset forfeiture funds that we receive from them. So it's an annual report and everything appears to be in order.
Any questions for Chief Sparks? All right, well, we're gonna place this one on the consent agenda for Monday. All right. Last item. Thank you, Chief Sparks. Last, last item. Consider approval of an application for an open container day permit on Saturday, September 13th, 2025, from 12:00 to 5:00 at Greystone Amphitheater for the city's 150th celebration. And Ms. Emily Hardaway will handle this.
Good evening, Emily Hardaway, 6695 Church Street. This item is asking to enact an entertainment district for the city's 150th celebration on Saturday, September 13th. Event will be from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m., and it should be a great event with food trucks, inflatable activities, a craft section, art vendors coordinated by the CAC, and live music on the stage throughout the entire event. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody? Any questions or comments? All right. Just as an aside, I know we've discussed this before, but if anybody says, hey, wait a minute, isn't that a park?
We decided when we did the Greystone Amphitheater and the Town Green that that would be one location that you all would have alcohol, hence you do for your concerts.
So that's been discussed previously. Go ahead.
But it's also part of the arts and entertainment district.
Correct.
Okay, just in case anybody was wondering. All right. Councilman Davis, you, you had that look. You don't have anything? No? All right, I'm gonna ask to place this on the consent agenda also for Monday. All right, thank you, Ms. Hardaway.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, that's all I had tonight under public safety.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Our next committee is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism. That's also by Councilman Watts.
No items tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. And the next committee is Technology Committee. Chair, chaired by Councilwoman Elaine Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
And our last committee, Transportation Committee. Councilman Davis, would you take that for us, please? Thank you. Mr. Davis, is there any other business at this time to come before City Council by any other member of the council? All right, now we'll move on to updates from the city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Dotson. Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Our staff attorney is Miranda Jordan.
No business, Mr. Mayor Protem, thank you.
Thank you. Our chief of police, the Honorable Dr. Sparks.
No business, Honorable Mayor Protem.
Thank you. City manager is Hampton.
I'm gonna have Jennifer Johnson and Samantha Rosado come and do a Cliff Notes version of their committee report so that you all can see what they were gonna present at the committee meetings.
Good evening, Jennifer Johnson, 6700 Church Street. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. This is gonna be the Conference Center and Tourism Department quarterly report. We were just gonna update a little bit on personnel. We have just a part-time position open. We've added an operations coordinator at the amphitheater, which is helping operations down there. You know, we've gotten busy with concerts and different things, and they do have a location down there for tours. So they're housed down there. Since the conference center's closed, we have, I think you've seen Ms. Brenda and Ms. Gina up front. So we've kind of cross-trained and moved some people around, so we didn't have to hire anybody or do anything like that. They're in different departments. About the conference center, foot traffic in front of the conference center, around the conference center, was 33,000 visitors. Total revenue, but this is for room rental for the conference center, was 223,000. Catering revenue is the profit that we make from catering, from proof of the pudding, was 33,000. And then closure period, the facility closed June 2nd, obviously of this year. Just some feature events. I won't go over all of them, but we've, you know, we've had Walmart, we've had Publix, we've had a couple of conferences. Walmart, we've had Publix, we've had a couple of conferences. And also I put the number of people that each one of these events had. 360 people, 300 people, 280 people. This is how we get our catering profit. Catering is per person, so I just wanted to show you those higher numbers and the bigger events that we do have. We have a lot more events than this, but I just wanted to highlight a few so you could see the numbers in the events that we had. This is digital signage, which is out front of the conference center. We want to display people coming to the city of Douglasville, coming to the conference center. So we started doing that. This is one of them, this is Celebrate You that the Chamber had back in May. And then we also did a couple of other ones, a wedding, of course, the Juneteenth Festival and the scholarship banquet. And everybody seemed to like it. So we will be doing this for every event moving forward. Samantha's going to give you a little information.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Samantha Rosado, 6700 Church Street. So as Jennifer said, we closed June 2nd for the conference center. So during May, we started auctioning off and removing the existing furniture there. June 18th, Albion, who's the general contractor of the project, they mobilized, they put the temporary fencing up and the signage. And then as of August 1st, all of the demolition inside of the building has been completed. So we're really excited about the progress that's been made there. A little behind the scenes snapshot of the amphitheater. We've had, year to date since our last presentation in August of 2024, we've had 110,000 visitors down there. We've hosted 73 events, that's through Parks and Recreation Programming, the farmer's market, Wednesday Wine Down, functions like that. Social media engagement's really up. We are at almost 3,000 followers on Instagram and 9,000 on Facebook. And then our concession revenue mirrors the setup that Proof of the Pudding does at the conference center, and so our check for 2024 was $27,233. A little bit of insight for tourism economic impact. So this is going to be looking at Douglas County as a whole. So tourism sustains 3.6% of the jobs. Our total properties that we received, the hotel multiple tax is 25. Without tourism in Douglas County, every household would be taxed an additional $469. And then the total hotel multiple tax collected is $3,203,000. So looking at the events that our department hosts, we have Stranger Things upcoming in November. We partner and collaborate with Main Street and do Trick or Treat in October. We have a family reunion workshop upcoming next Saturday, and that's going to be at Hunter Park. And we kind of look at all of the parks and other venues that the city hosts to show people and showcase Douglasville as a destination for reunions. Travel and Tourism Week is in May, and then we have, we host our spring and fall concert series. And then we obviously have the one that's this Saturday. So a little bit about our promotions. Whenever Parks received their award, we did showcase that on a billboard. And so going west into Douglasville, right before you hit Six Flags, we had a billboard that Community Relations helped with designing. We do a lot of print advertising. We're in the Douglas County Chamber Community Guide. We're in local publications and the Georgia State Parks map. And then some digital advertising, we do a lot of boosted posts on social media and then the digital displays at the mall and then the ones that the city owns as well. And then just some things that are in progress and upcoming. So our mobile visitor center is currently being fitted in the interior. Exterior will go to Extreme Images at the end of the month. Printed collateral that will be finished at the end of this year and rolling out in January is the new conference center brochure, a dining guide, a sports playbook, and then the visitors guide. And then just with our retail, we always want to put Douglasville first in front of people. And so we've got new branded merchandise like t-shirts, hats, and then keychains that are being shipped currently, and then new postcard designs. That is everything.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rosado. It was an issue that was brought up a couple of meetings ago. We had talked about putting up banners in downtown for convention, for convention years, I guess, to honor people, like if the National Association of, you know, puppy lovers comes into town, we want to put up something that, you know, along the streets. Is there, have we moved forward on that idea yet?
Staff did. There was lots of discussions and we did attempt with some research. So we worked with public services. The new pole banners are owned by Georgia Power. Those are more outfitted for design and not for like wind load. And so they don't have the capacity to hold a pole banner in case the wind is high. So it's not the safest solution.
Are you talking about the ones, because I've seen, we put up banners like the smaller ones that go on the light posts. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir. I worked with public services, so I spoke with Melissa and Corey Jackson. And so just the new ones were not outfitted for that. And so we did attempt, but I don't think the ones Georgia Power installed are capable of allowing us to do that.
That's really too bad. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, can I ask, did Director Bass have anything to do with that billboard? Did he put you?
He did not.
If he's not in the room, then that was a wasted joke. But I would, I would say that if he did have anything to do with it, I wholeheartedly agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments for visitors' conventions here? Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation, I appreciate that. Back to you, city manager. Is there anything else under your agenda?
I do not have anything else, just to remind you that that department is solely funded by hotel multiple tax. And you all have executive session after this, so you may want a break.
That's right. All right, so we now come to the time on our, on our, on our agenda, on sprockets, when we open the floor for comments from citizens and delegates. I don't know that we have any delegates here tonight, but if you're a citizen, please feel free to come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, even if we've heard it once before.
My name is Kelvin Harris. Address 6637 Copy Court, Douglasville, Georgia 30134. Councilmember, I want to thank y'all, but I just got to let y'all know a little something. Dr. LaShawn Dantley, Councilman Sam Davis, representing the North Side. They have spoken out on this issue about my long road.
Mr. Harris, I'm sorry, I have to stop you. We cannot talk about the zoning issues after the zoning hearing has closed.
It's a citizen comment, right?
We cannot talk about the zoning matter once that's closed.
I'm just making a statement, and that's my right. Okay, that's my right. All I'm asking is take your brother and sister advice sometime. Your children, too. I'm not asking y'all to say anything. This is my opinion and this is my right to say and sentence a comment. Now if there's a problem with me saying something, then I revoke, step back. But when I come back again, you might not like because I bring the news with. I'm just making a statement. That's my right. Is there a problem with that?
It is a violation of state law.
Anyone else would like to come up and speak now that stay within the parameters of the law?
Jack Clower, 4867 Maroni Mill Road, Douglasville, Georgia. I'm a country boy, you can probably hear it by my voice. I lived all my life out there. I'm 79 years old. I got the shock of my life last, last month when they sent out the tax notices. And I'm here to ask the city of Douglasville, Counsel, I need your help because I walk in the tax office and said, I'm here, I got a question for you. I want to pay my property tax. He said, you can't do that anyway till October. I said, I understand now. But I said, a question. How do you say I owe city, city tax? I said, I got 15 acres out there and a separate, two acres and then 13 behind it. He says, that's in the city. Oh, it was not pretty. I said, what do you mean in the city? So he said, hold on just a minute. So he went up, come back downstairs, printed out a plaque, the dark area there. How did that happen? We have no record. The cities, the people in the city hall up here have been helping me, trying to track it down. The county can't tell me how I was annexed in. All I'm asking y'all to do is put me back into the county. I didn't want to be annexed into the city. Nobody can tell me how I got put in there. In other words, you know, I'd like to see the city ordinance where the property was annexed. Nobody can tell me. And I've, the people here have been helping me at the city hall. Nobody can give me an answer.
Can you give us your address one more time, please? So we can look that up.
The address is 4867 Maroni Mill Road. Me and my brother, there were three of us brothers, the old dairy farm, we split it three ways, 15, roughly 15 acres apiece. Okay, so I set two acres, had a house on two acres, you know, when I had a mortgage there, but it's still 13 acres. But when I go up there, just thankful, I went up there back in July and he said, this is, this is not, that's in the city. I said, no, it's not. So I want y'all, if you will, whatever you do, de-annex it and put me back in the county like it used to be all my life.
We can check with our city councilors to see if there's a process by which you can de-annex.
Do you have any idea, Jack, how long it's been in the city?
Maybe one, one year, two years, because I've got a statement right here from, from 2023 property tax.
Staff is already researching it, so.
Okay, okay.
They've been working on it, you know, the girls, well.
Right.
They've got a couple here to back me up, but I need some help from y'all and just say, hey, put him back in the county.
Yes, sir, Mr. Clower. I spoke with my colleagues as well about the issue, and I know we've spoke with staff, so we're trying to figure it out. I know we don't have a 100% answer for you right now, but I know we are actively working on getting this issue resolved for you, whatever that looks like.
They've been staying in contact with me. We've been working on it for a month, you know, just back, but we can't get no answers. But, you know, it is a shock when you come up there and I'm, I'm in the county. And he's, no, you're not, you're in the, I said, show me. And he went up there and pulled up a plaque. I would have brought each one of y'all that, but I, you know, you've been trying to help me out with, but if y'all would vote to put me back in the county and I'll go away, back to the county out here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to take this opportunity to be de-annexed or anything else you'd like to say to the, to the city council? All right, well, not hearing any. At this time, I will open the floor for a motion to go to adjournment to executive session. We haven't moved, do we have a second?
Yep.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a, we have a majority. We are moved to executive session for, prior to, post a five-minute recess.